The next speaker group is the Labor's Health and Safety Fund of North America, represented by Ryan Paparillo, Travis Parsons, Nate Schreiber, and Shannon Jones. Please state your name and affiliation as you all transition throughout your testimony.
All right. Good afternoon. This is Travis Parsons from Labor Health and Safety Fund of North America. I'm going to start, then Nate Schreiber is going to go second, Ryan Paparillo is going to go third, and then Shannon Jones is going to take us home. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thanks to OSHA for all your hard work on this important rule, and thanks to Judge Bell for keeping these hearings running smoothly and keeping us online when needed. I really want to shout out to OSHA. I have to admit, I miss the in-person hearings and watching people's reactions, but you guys have done a heck of a job with this hearing, and I know it's not over yet, but good job. My name is Travis Parsons, and I'm testifying today on behalf of the Labor Health and Safety Fund of North America, where I serve as the Director of Occupational Safety and Health. The fund supports the Labor International Union of North America, Launa, and its more than 530,000 members, skilled workers who often perform physically demanding jobs in extreme heat, both indoors and outdoors across all 50 states. Launa members build our nation's infrastructure, including roads, bridges, water systems, and schools, and work across every segment of the energy sector as well. We also represent more than 70,000 public employees who provide essential services, and we represent over 47,000 mail handlers through our affiliate, the National Postal Mail carriers Union. We strongly support OSHA's effort to establish a national heat standard. With rising temperatures and longer summers, heat has become one of the most pressing workplace hazards facing our workers and our members today. Hundreds of workers suffer heat stroke, kidney failure, and even death each year simply for doing their jobs. These tragedies are not inevitable, they are completely preventable. Without an enforceable OSHA standard, many workers will continue working under tight production deadlines with little to no access to basic protections like water, shade, rest breaks, or adequate training. These are not luxuries, they are essential safeguards and basic human rights. Relying on voluntary measures in the general duty clause has proven inadequate for protecting workers from heat stress. In fact, a 2022 GAO Government Accountability Office report outlined the major challenges OSHA faces in investigating and citing heat-related violations without a specific standard for heat illness. The result: Protections very widely across states and industries, and way too many workers fall through the cracks. This proposed rule offers a much-needed solution for that. It creates a clear, science-based framework with enforceable requirements like hydration, rest, shade, acclimation, training, and emergency response. These protections will save lives, reduce injuries, and improve productivity, and promote long-term health and safety in the workplace. Excessive heat already costs the US economy over $100 billion annually in lost productivity alone. By 2030, the losses are estimated to double into $200 billion, and by 2050, they could even reach as much as $500 billion, according to several sources out there. This is in a lot of news media outlets and some scientific journals. Therefore, doing nothing has a high, high, high cost, just sitting here and sitting back and doing nothing. So, we also support the testimony submitted by the FLCIO and North Americans Building Trades Unions, with whom we work closely with on safety and health issues every day. I now want to take a couple moments to address two recurring themes that I've heard throughout these hearings: the idea that this rule is one-size-fits-all and the call for a purely performance-based standard. While the rule rightfully sets baseline heat protection using temperature triggers across all industries, it also builds in meaningful flexibility. To me, one-size-fits-all is more of a soundbite than it is a fair critique of this rule. OSHA's proposal is not rigid, is not a rigid one-size-fits-all mandate. It establishes a national baseline through triggers of protections while allowing employers the flexibility to tailor plans to their specific work sites, mainly through site-specific heat injury and illness prevention plans or HIPS. Employers assess their unique risk and determine appropriate controls on those job sites. The rule also includes reasonable exemptions alike those for short-term exposures or certain indoor conditions and telework to reflect operational realities. The idea that different regions require completely different protection misses the key point as the previous speaker just laid out. No matter where our workers located, the human body responds to the heat the same way and needs the same protections. Our kidneys, neurons, and cooling mechanisms don't know whether we're in Arizona or Pennsylvania. They respond to heat load and hydration, not regional politics, convenience, or production schedules. This rule strikes a thoughtful balance between worker protections and employer flexibility, as I pointed out earlier, and a federal standard ensures a baseline that employers in every state must meet. That way, no workers left behind. Now, let's talk about the idea of a purely performance-based approach for heat illness prevention. On paper, it sounds adaptable, but in practice, it's vague and inconsistent and difficult to enforce. Without clear environmental triggers like temperature or wet bulb globe temperature thresholds, worker protections become subjective. Workers doing the same job under similar heat conditions may receive drastically different protections based solely on different employer interpretations. To me, that's not safety, that's a gamble, and it doesn't align with OSHA's mission to ensure a safe and healthful working environment. Performance-based standards also shift the burden to least-equipped, small, mid-sized employers who often lack resources to have safety and a health expertise, and then eventually on the workers who are expected to self-regulate, even as the heat impairs their ability to think clearly or recognize symptoms. This is unrealistic and dangerous. Furthermore, a reactive system waiting for signs of illness is a recipe for tragedies to continue to occur. Underreporting becomes common, and by the time someone speaks up, it may be too late. We've seen that time and time again with some recent fatalities that have been laid out in these hearings. Well over 400 workers have died from occupational heat exposure over the last decade. That's not theory, that's reality, and it's unacceptable. OSHA's job is to set clear, enforceable requirements that employers can follow and inspectors can enforce. A performance-based approach may sound good in theory, but in the real world, it leads to inconsistent protections, weak enforcement, and greater risk for all workers. To me, a performance-based standard for heat stress is performative, not protective. In conclusion, this rule is OSHA's chance to do what the science and the moment demand, set a strong, enforceable baseline protections for workers exposed to dangerous heat. Workers should never have to choose between a paycheck and their health or their life. I want to thank you for your time today, and I'm now going to turn it over to my colleagues, starting with Nate Schreiber.
Nate Schreiber, Labor Health and Safety Fund of North America. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to OSHA for the opportunity to testify on this critical proposed rule. My name is Nate Schreiber. I serve as an industrial hygienist for the Labor's Health and Safety Fund of North America. I'll focus my testimony on the health impacts of heat exposure, including the long-term and cumulative effects it can have on the human body. Across the United States, construction workers represent only 6% of the workforce but account for 36% of all heat-related workplace fatalities. This is a stat that is alarmingly disproportionate. As evidenced by this metric, addressing heat exposure is a crucial task that deserves our time, attention, and resources. Looking to the future, this problem is not going away. The planet is getting hotter, and 2024 proved to be the hottest year on record since the National Weather Service's inception. On behalf of our organization's members, I would like to touch on a topic that is not discussed nearly enough in considerations that OSHA should keep in mind when weighing the need for a heat rule. Outside of countless examples that have been discussed throughout these testimonies, I have a personal story that inspired me to give this testimony today. My brother is a welder and a track laborer for a large railroad company. He has shared with me countless safety concerns that he experiences on a day-to-day basis, such as train derailing, chemical exposures, heavy manual labor, and of course, heat exposure. He's often in remote locations, doing heavy manual labor and sweltering heat. As his brother and a safety professional, I take particular interest in listening and trying to advise the best course of action for him to take. Early in his career, he said something that stuck out to me. It was simply put, but it was profound. He said, "I don't mess around with the heat, it's no joke." A little surprised by this, I asked why that is. In my mind, you're a really tough guy, something as simple as heat wouldn't faze you. He said, "If you get overheated once, you're never quite the same afterwards." He went on to say that many of his fellow coworkers had fallen victim to heat exhaustion over the years. They shared with him that ever since this experience, they just aren't the same when it comes to their heat tolerance. They can no longer stay in direct sunlight for extended periods of time. They can't keep up the same pace they could prior to experiencing heat illness, and they never quite seemed able to handle high temperatures the same. I've listened to testimonials for the last few weeks, and the heat keeps getting referenced as a temporary burden that prevents companies from meeting their project deadlines. I understand the importance of project deadlines and profit streams, but the workers that fulfill those metrics are the most valuable asset of this equation. Heat stress is a serious cumulative occupational hazard that should be given consideration on how to best, and should be given thoughtful consideration on how to best manage and mitigate its exposure. While many appear to treat heat illness as a momentary condition, the physiological consequences can actually last a lifetime. An often overlooked fact is that even one severe episode of heat stroke can cause permanent physiological change to occur, particularly to the body's ability to thermoregulate itself. Because of the way the body's thermoregulatory system works, repeated exposures that are perceived as low-level exposures may also cause cumulative internal damage. A dramatic heat stroke is not always necessary for damage to occur. This impairment means that single episodes of heat stroke should not be considered isolated incidents in time. That damage can make recovery and return to work in hot conditions exceptionally risky without proper controls or guidance. Furthermore, research shows that individuals who have experienced heat stroke often fail heat tolerance tests and are twice as likely to experience recurrent exertional heat illness, even with moderate exposures. This cumulative damage is not speculation either. It's well documented in clinical and occupational medical literature. Survivors of heat stroke often suffer from increased susceptibility to future heat illnesses, long-term renal impairment, neurological damage, and just chronic issues with thermoregulatory dysfunction. The human body's resilience to heat deteriorates, and these damages accumulate, particularly when heat exposure is chronic, as it often is in construction, agriculture, and manufacturer settings. In the sense of this proposed rule, OSHA is not only preventing acute injuries, it's also defending against a long-term occupational disease process. The current regulatory structure allows everything to go unchecked. Each unreported or untreated heat incident has the potential to build towards a chronic injury. Any standard developed by OSHA must reflect this reality: heat illness is cumulative. Workers who experience an overexposure do not instantly return to baseline after their perceived recovery. They become vulnerable, and without enforcement of acclimatization, monitoring, and work rest protocols, these workers risk unmanaged exposures and preventable harm. I'll conclude by saying failing to act on heat hazards is a decision to allow irreversible damage to accumulate in the bodies of working people, people like our members at Launa and people like my brother. OSHA's proposed rule recognizes heat as the life-altering hazard that it is, and it rightly emphasizes prevention through acclimatization, hydration, engineering controls, and rest. States like California, Maryland, Washington State, and Oregon have implemented heat illness prevention standards with demonstratable success. California's system, which has been in place since 2006, has shown reduced fatalities where enforcement is consistent. OSHA can build on this foundation with their proposed rule and set the bar for the entire country on how to manage heat stress. I'd like to thank everyone for their time, and now I'll turn things over to Ryan Paparillo.
Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, and thank you to the OSHA staff and administrative law Judge Bell for the opportunity to present our testimony. My name is Ryan Paparillo, and I am the Safety and Health Specialist for the Labor Health and Safety Fund of North America. I'm the Chair of North America's Building Trades Union's Heat Injury and Illness Prevention Subcommittee. I also participate in the ASSP ANSI 81050 Heat Stress Management Standards subgroup and OSHA's Advisory Committee for Construction Safety and Health, or ACOS. Heat and extreme temperatures continue to cause preventable worker deaths in indoor and outdoor environments. Our members are on the front lines of construction, demolition, highway work, and other high-risk sectors, industries increasingly threatened by rising temperatures and dangerous heat exposures. Protecting workers from heat illness is not only the right thing to do, it's a smart business decision. A healthy workforce means fewer medical incidents, lower associated costs, and higher productivity. The proposed rules, the proposed rule identifies key factors essential to protecting workers from heat hazards. One critical factor includes implementing a comprehensive heat injury and illness prevention plan, or HIP. A well-designed and written HIP is a cornerstone of any successful heat safety program. It serves as a proactive guide to protect workers from the dangers of heat exposure. An effective prevention plan must include the following elements with a few recommendations: Water, rest, and shade provisions; Clear employer and employee responsibilities; Gradual acclimatization plan; Emergency response plan; Monitoring; Heat hazard assessments; High heat procedures; Body system procedures; Training requirements and record-keeping; And site-specific hazards and hierarchy of controls planning as well. By implementing these key elements, both employers and employees will gain a clear understanding of their responsibilities and actions needed on the job site. I'd like, I'd now like to address the critical component of heat illness prevention: acclimatization. This adaptive process includes gradual exposure to hot environments and improves overall heat tolerance, particularly for new returning or unacclimatized workers. A comprehensive acclimatization plan can prevent fatalities in the first to two weeks of work. According to OSHA, most fatalities, 50% to 70%, occur in the first few days of working in warm or hot environments. Extreme temperature fluctuations highlight exactly why this proposed rule must prioritize worker acclimatization. Just last week, temperatures in many parts of the country jumped from upper 50s to nearly 100 degrees in a matter of days. These rapid shifts give the human body little time to adapt, significantly increasing the risk of heat-related illnesses. Lack of acclimatization is one of the most well-documented risk factors for serious injury and fatal outcomes on the job. Unacclimatized workers do not sweat officially. Their sweat contains more salt. Their body temperature and heart rate increase more quickly when working, and their blood flow is not optimized for heat dissipation. Versus acclimatized workers, their sweating rate is higher, which helps dissipate heat through evaporative cooling. Their sweat contains less salt, which prevents development of electrolyte imbalances. They maintain lower body temperature and heart rate. And lastly, they experience increased blood flow to the skin to help the cooler body. When workers travel to hot, humid locations, similar to how professional athletes must quickly adapt to unfamiliar environments, they often have little time to adjust before beginning strenuous job tasks. Without proper preparation, this sudden exposure can increase the risk of heat-related illnesses. Acclimatization is the body's natural way of getting used to extreme conditions. Over time, it can improve performance and greatly reduce the risk of heat-related illnesses, like heat exhaustion and heat stroke. This process is essential for keeping workers safe and productive in hot environments. I want to share the story of Tim Barber, a 35-year-old Launa member who tragically lost his life due to heat exposure while working on the Genesee's River Bridge construction project in upstate New York. It was only his second day on the job. According to OSHA's investigation, he was not given its essential protections, including water, rest, shade, training, or being acclimated to the conditions. After his first day, his parents noticed that he didn't look well. He went to work the next day, collapsed at the end of his shift, and never returned home. Tim succumbed to hyperthermia caused by heat exhaustion and heat stress. He lacked the proven safeguards that could have saved his life because it wasn't required. Tim was more than a worker. He was an artist. He loved country music. He was a devoted Buffalo Bills fan, and his death was 100% preventable. Stories like this happen far too often. We must shift from a reactive to a proactive strategy that focuses on protecting workers from extreme temperatures, sorry. In closing, heat is not just a weather event. It's a workplace hazard, and this rule is long overdue. We urge OSHA to move swiftly and decisively to finalize a strong enforceable heat injury and illness prevention standard. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Shannon Jones.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shannon Jones. I am the Field Coordinator, Tri-Fun Field Coordinator for Health and Safety Fund of North America. I cover the Mid-Atlantic region, which consists of 40,000 members. My area is Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, and North Carolina, DC, and Pennsylvania. So, some of my live experiences has been, I've worked the construction trade for about, I would say, 15 years. I have poured concrete, 40,000 yards of concrete within the week. I have passed out on the job site, just a lack of not knowing that I need to drink water every day. When I woke up, I was just, I was just, you know, just, just, I was, I was, I was out, you know? So, once I became an instructor in 2002, I got educated, and I realized that, you know, drinking water nowadays is a plus on the job site. So, as I go out to job sites, like asphalt sites, where they're pouring asphalt, there's 190 degrees and 300 degrees coming off the truck. You know, I make sure that the members are staying hydrated, make sure that they have the proper clothes for, you know, so they can sweat. I talk to the safety officers and make sure that they have the proper tents, make sure that, you know, they have the shade, the tents, make sure that they have water and all that good stuff. So, my testimony is that the heat standard is definitely needed by being a construction worker and being out there in the field and, you know, just doing the job. It's definitely needed, and that's my testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions from this panel from the OSHA ring?
Yes, Your Honor, we do have a few questions. This is Jonathan Bear Osham. I'm going to hand it over to Eduardo Hernandez.
Hello, Eduardo Hernandez with OSHA. Thank you for your testimony, all four of you, and for highlighting many worker testimonials about the impacts of heat. In the written comments that were submitted, there were several key requirements outlined that argued, that you argued to be essential to protect workers from heat-related illness, and one of those was the buddy system. So, we'd be interested in hearing more about your members' experience and the success and feasibility of a buddy system. And, you know, generally, in your opinion, is it feasible to have more than one buddy or a small pot of workers observe each other? And, yeah, do you have any recommendations on how to fulfill an observation requirement in the case of lone workers? And happy to, you know, if you want time to think about it and post your comments as well.
Yeah, this is Travis. I'll start out, and then I'll probably kick it to Ryan Paparillo, who's our buddy system pro. But in general, I have to go on the record and say this, I don't think there should be lone workers. I know they happen out there, but being a lone worker just isn't safe, especially when it comes to heat illness. How are you supposed to recognize signs and symptoms without a buddy? So, with that on the record that I don't like lone workers and I don't think they should be out there, I know they happen, I'm going to kick it to Ryan to talk about the buddy system.
Everyone hear me?
Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, I do agree with Travis, you know, being in the laborers and working with our members. We really don't like the lone worker policy or just lone workers in general. We usually put a policy in, but for buddy systems, I really feel that it's very important to put into place, especially when you're doing training, especially early in the stage, new hire or new hire orientation, whatever the case is, because that's where workers can check on their buddy, check on their brother and sister, check on their other, you know? Because a lot of our workers have been working with their buddy or their other worker for years, and they know when something's wrong, especially when you're far out. They might be, they might be kind of remote, away from the job trailer, away from where home bases, and I feel like the buddy system is, that's where it's most important. Thank you.
For our next questions, I will hand it over to Zedek Petropolis. She's on the line.
I actually only have one question for you, I think. We'll see. We've heard from other witnesses during the hearing that OSHA has failed to account for what they describe as "the natural acclimatization that workers develop from living in the same locale as where they work." Does your panel agree with this? Why or why not?
Sorry.
Well, you know, as acclimatization occurs, we've heard about fatalities with workers that probably were acclimatized. So, you know, the example from Texas that we just heard about in the previous speaker. Obviously, that worker lived and worked in Texas and still succumbed to heat illness. So, while acclimatization is very important, you know, I don't agree with some of those commenters. It depends on geography. And we'd be happy to follow up with that and post your comments as well.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Our next couple of questions, they're going to be read into the record for you all to consider in your post-hearing comments. Adriana Lopez?
Hi, Adriana Lopez, OSHA Director, the Standards and Guidance. Do you represent workers in Alaska or states with similar climates? And what type of indoor workers in these climates are exposed to heat in these environments? Is the outdoor temperature directly related to their exposure?
Yes, we absolutely represent a ton of workers in Alaska and indoor and outdoor workers across the country. For specific examples and numbers, I'd have to follow up in the post-hearing comment, but, you know, we're in all 50 states, and we have 20,000 of workers in Alaska that work indoor and outdoor. But for specific numbers, we'll follow up in the post-hearing comments.
Thank you. That would be great. And what type of outdoor workers in these climates are exposed to heat?
Well, so, we'll follow up with that in post-hearing comments.
Great, that's fine. And then, as a union that covers workers across the United States, have you evaluated the impact of state-level heat regulations on employees?
We haven't per se ourselves, but I did hear from previous testimony about a week ago, some promising stuff out of California from Ellie Barberash with the SEIU. She had a study that was referenced in a white paper, and it's going to be published soon, that showed really good outcomes from California standard and decreased. And then, as far as the other state rules, they're pretty new. A couple of them, Maryland was just last year, Washington State, and Oregon. I'm sure they're helping, and we'll be happy to follow that and then follow up and post your comments.
Cool. Thank you very much for responding. Those are all my questions.
Jonathan Bear Osham, I was asked by counsel just to remind the testifiers that if you are planning to submit testimony from workers about the heat standard, that this is something that you can submit as part of your post-hearing comments. With that, OSHA concludes our questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any questions from the solicitor?
No questions for the solicitor. Thank you very much for your testimony and time.
Any other questions for this panel? Are there other questions for this panel?
There are. I'm not sure if Miriam is still on. Is that the case? Has she dropped off?
Okay. Well, I'm going to assume that there aren't.
There are. We're having some issues on our end, so let me figure this out.
All right. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, this is Jason Hammer from OSHA. We have three questions from three different participants, Your Honor.
I see four.
Oh, four now.
Okay, you're seeing a lot more than I am. Who are we going to say has the first question?
Scott Schneider, let me promote you. I believe you can go off mute now.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name's Scott Schneider, and I had two questions. I wanted you to elaborate on some stuff I heard in your testimony. Some of the stakeholders have expressed concerns about the economic impact of the standard. In your view, how does protecting workers from heat stress actually benefit employers and the broader economy?
Yeah, this is Travis Parsons. I'll take that. That's the heat protection is just the right thing to do. I think it's smart economics to answer your question, Scott. It pays off at higher productivity, fewer injuries, fewer disruptions, and just overall a healthier, more stable workforce. and just overall a healthier, more stable workforce. Uh, as I, as I testified, doing nothing is a cost about it and it gets really expensive really quick for society as a whole. So, you know, all those things I talked about, you know, productivity, increased productivity, fewer, fewer injuries. It is an investment instead of a cost.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other question I had was, we, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about performance based standards. And you said that they can lead to inconsistent protections. So could you give, explain that a little bit more or give an example of how this would put great workers at greater risk?
Yeah, this is Travis Parsons again and I'll, I'll take that one again. Scott, thank you for that. I think that was in part of my testimony and part of CWA's testimony, um, also covered some of this. I'll try to keep it quick. Um, but imagine two different construction sites, both operating in the same city in the same temperature and the same, let's just say same city, same county. Uh, with the ninety five degrees Fahrenheit or something like that heat index or WBGT measurement. Uh, at site A, the employer has a really proactive heat safety plan. They, they do everything with monitoring. They provide breaks with shade, they, they schedule their breaks, they supply cold water and they ensure a worker is acclimatized. In the same city, same county, we have site B. The employer takes a performance based approach and leaves it up to the supervisors on the job who don't believe that heat safety is a problem. Takes it's a personal responsibility. And, you know, they may or may not offer water, they don't necessarily have shade or brakes. Um, there's no monitoring going on. So how is that, you know, that's two different scenarios with this, this performance based, uh, and the same city and same county and the workers aren't getting equal protections.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Who has the next questions, please?
Our next question is from Jordan Barrett.
Yeah. Hey Travis and everyone. Thanks for the testimony. Uh, it's quite interesting. Two questions. In fear, you mentioned, uh, and actually many, um, witnesses have mentioned that we don't need a standard. All we need is the, uh, OSHA continue using the general duty clause. Um, in your view, why is the proposed standard preferable to just relying on the general duty clause?
Yeah, this is Travis Parsons. I'll take that one again. Thank you, Jordan, for that question. Um, while the general duty clause plays a very important role as a catchall for OSHA, it's really designed when there's, there is no rule, there's, there's no known hazards and it's a catchall for a safe work site. It's really insufficient alone to ensure effective and consistent worker safety, especially, uh, for hazard like heat stress that requires clear preventative actions and we know what they are. Uh, also, there's several notable cases and legal outcomes that have demonstrated the limitations and inconsistencies of relying on the general duty clause for heat related hazards. One high profile, high profile case is the Secretary of Labor versus A H Sturgill Roofing in two thousand and nineteen. Um, in that case, uh, you know, there was a roofing situation where the, the worker succumbed and, um, they, they were, the citation was thrown out, um, and there was a very big bias at the end of it, the decision from the OSHA review commission. Um, that they said without specific enforceable OSHA heat standard, it's extremely difficult to hold employers accountable to prevent heat related incidents.
Okay. Are you aware of any or many or any general duty clause citations uh, that were handed down by OSHA before a worker was injured or killed or are they always pretty much after a worker's killed?
Uh, all the ones I know of are, are reactive. Um, I'd, I'd love to research that and find one that wasn't, but I'll, I'll happy to, I'm happy to look into that and write that out to post your comments.
All right, one more question. Um, your comments, you said the key requirements were highlighted to protect workers from heat related illnesses. Um, can you expand on the use of measurement tools and, uh, what should be used?
Yeah, there's a lot of different ones out there and, uh, I'm gonna kick this one to Ryan Paparillo to answer that. He researched this for us on our panel.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, thank you for the question. Ryan Pepperell with the Laborers. Uh, so there's many different options that are available to employers such as the heat index, AIHAs and OSHA, NIOSH's heat apps, wet ball globe temperature instrument and even OSHA's wet ball globe temperature, uh, calculator that's on their website. So these technologies make it very easy and inexpensive for employers to measure and monitor heat throughout the workday. Uh, and really we commend OSHA and NIOSH and I, AIHA for having, uh, free apps to use. Um, then including in the, in the proposed rule, the flexibility to employers, um, to choose an instrument or app that they want to use. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. That's all I have. Who has the next question, please?
Our next question is from Rebecca Rendell.
Hi there. Good afternoon. This is Rebecca Rendell. My question is for anyone in the panel who is best to answer this. Um, the OSHA proposal doesn't have any requirements to use the hierarchy of controls or mentions any engineering controls for outdoor workers. Um, but I know that other other recommendations have required this. Would you be able to provide us some examples of engineering controls that your outdoor workers, um, you know, use or the workplaces could use? Thank you.
Yes, uh, obviously this Travis Parsons, I'll take this and then I'll let my colleagues fill in any gaps that I miss. Um, obviously indoors, it's a lot easier for engineering controls, but there are engineering controls out there for outdoor workers. Anytime you can increase general ventilation, fans, uh, air blowing on the workers to cool them down, help, uh, cooling fans throughout the work site. Um, there is sometimes you can actually have, uh, some air conditioning units out there. Not just fans moving air, but actual air conditioning on job sites. We have seen that. Any kind of reflective shields that can redirect radiant heat from heavy machinery or anything that's producing ambient heat, uh, isolating hot surfaces, um, anything you can do to reduce, uh, moisture from and then keeping maintenance on, on heavy equipment out there in the outdoors. And then, uh, a bigger one too is, is when it comes to rest breaks. Uh, there's a lot of stuff out there like cold seats or benches for rest break areas where you're providing shade and, and like misting fans, I think is the one I missed too. Uh, we've seen some really cool things recently as the heat, uh, goes on and on, uh, with misting fans on construction sites. Even Shannon, I think, might have an example of that from a work site he moves on.
Yeah, this is Shannon Jones, uh, Labor's Health and Safety. Um, yeah, so I was on a asphalt job and, uh, it was, I mean, extremely hot, uh, similar to today in Washington DC. It's like a hundred degrees. Uh, and they use, uh, like the misting fans that you would see at the amusement parks. Uh, and they work great. Uh, they, you know, it actually cools the body down. Uh, they was rotating the guys, you know, like every fifteen minutes. Like I said earlier, the, the temperatures get up to like three hundred degrees in the area where the asphalt is being poured. So, uh, yeah, misting fans really work very, very well. Uh, uh, the pop up tents work great also. Uh, they, you know, they, they put the, there's little shades down on the side of the tent and that works phenomenal just to block the sun and get a little air going and get a little mist going just to cool the body.
All right. Who has our next question?
Our next question is from Chris Kane.
Chris Kane with North America's Building Trades Unions. Um, one of the things that's been brought up a lot during the hearing is that.
Kane, we've lost you. Can't hear you anymore.
I was muted somehow. I'll start from the beginning of my question. Um, some of the arguments that we've heard is that worker behaviors like coming to work dehydrated or being on medicine make managing heat not feasible. I was wondering if you could respond to those arguments.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Nate respond to that. He did whenever he was doing all his research on cumulative exposures. I think he looked into this. Nate, will you respond to that?
Sure. Nate Schreiber, Labor's Health and Safety Fund. So in terms of worker behavior, I think that's, you know, a factor in any evaluation of like a safety system, for example. But when we look at the reality of, of workers, um, you know, they're not going to be able to give themselves a medical diagnosis, for example, if they're experiencing, you know, uh, heat exhaustion. Uh, ultimately it's up to the employer to control the structure of a workday. Things like break times, water access, shade availability as Shannon just provided. Um, if a worker arrives maybe slightly dehydrated um, to the job site and then they work for eight hours on top of that with no kind of formal rest schedule or shaded area, um, you know, I think that goes beyond a behavioral issue, um, and you move into like a systemic kind of risk. So, um, I think, uh, heat illness prevention program would account for that kind of human variability. Um, you know, if you want to relate it to fall protection, you know, we don't assume workers are gonna tie off. Uh, you know, they gotta be trained and we have to stay within, um, you know, some boundaries. So it's about building safeguards to me.
Thank you. No more questions.
All right. Are there any other questions for this panel?
We have one more question from Dan Gluckman.
Go ahead, Mr. Gluckman.
All right, thank you. Um, a question for Shannon and Dan Gluckman with ISEA. Shannon, you had talked about workers doing asphalt paving and said something about like making sure they wear the right clothing. But could you talk a little more specifically about the kind of clothing that's recommended for, uh, workers who are doing the asphalt paving?
Yeah, so they usually, uh, have a tendency to wear like a light color clothing, uh, because dark color clothing uh, absorb, uh, more heat. Uh, they usually wear like, uh, athletic, athletic shirts, uh, you know, something that can actually hold the sweat. And as you, uh, go under a fan, it will cool the body. Um, it's, it's just a brutal environment. Uh, like I said, it, it can get up to like three hundred degrees around the, the spreader itself. Uh, so, uh, just, you know, you just make sure that, you know, you dress thin but safe, I should say. Uh, a lot of breathable, breathable clothing, uh, works great. Um, even the hard hat nowadays, you know, they, they use the hard hats and they have vents, uh, in the hard hat that, that usually work. Uh, neck protectors, they, uh, use, uh, use neck protectors to shade the neck, uh, long sleeve shirts. Uh, and, uh, they, they use a thin type of glove. Yeah, it helps with, uh, with the sun exposure, right, the heat.
All right, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions for this panel?
I see no more questions.
All right. Uh, any other witnesses to come before us today?
That's it.
All right, we're now at the end of all scheduled witnesses for today. I'd like to remind the hearing participants that they may submit additional evidence or statements relevant to this proceeding within ninety days of the close of the hearing, which will be September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. At that point, the record for this rulemaking will close. On behalf of the Department of Labor, I wish to publicly thank all those who gave up their time and testimony to contribute to this hearing today. To all participants, thank you for your interest in this important matter. The hearing is adjourned for today and I believe we'll reconvene at nine thirty AM Eastern Time tomorrow. Thanks, everybody.